I'd like to call this school board meeting to order. We're going to go to item A or item B, I mean a motion to approve this agenda.
I agree.
Motion by Janice, so you're second?
Second.
Second by Ricky, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, I'd like to welcome Ms. Debbie Maynard with White Associates to go over the audit reports with this. Ms. Maynard?
My audit, if I have any questions that I can try to give. But first of all, I wanted to tell you, I am Debbie Maynard and I'm an auditor with White Associates. And Ari couldn't be here tonight, Ari might, so he asked me to come and present the audit to you. And then we really want to thank the superintendent and Myra Veth and the school personnel and everybody who helped to contribute to getting the audit done. We appreciate that very much. And first of all, I think the easiest thing to do is if y'all will turn to page eighty-two. It's a summary of the audit report. So at the top, you'll see summary of auditor's reports, you see that? So when we do the audit, there are three different types of reports. The first report is the auditor's report, which as you, is the first line there, you can see it's an unmodified opinion. And that is the best type of opinion you can get, and that's what you really want, and that's what you got. So that was good. And then the next one starts talking about government auditing standards report. It's the next two, which show that there were no significant deficiencies and none of them were material, so there were no findings reported. And the third one says there were no material nondefiance that was reported in the government auditing standards. Then our next report is, has to do with your federal major, your major programs for federal monies. And so the first line there, you'll see that they're asking, was there any material weaknesses in your major programs that we tested? And there are, says no. Were there any significant deficiencies in internal control that were not considered being material weaknesses? And there were none reported there. And then what type of report was issued on compliance for the major programs? So you had an unmodified opinion. And then the last question I'm showing is if the audit disclosed findings that relates to major programs? And that is no. So all three reports were as good as really you can get, and there were no findings. As you can see right down below there are findings, none for the financial statement audit, that's the government auditing standards. And then as far as the major federal awards, there were no findings there. If you look kind of up in the middle, you'll see major programs we tested. Your educational stabilization fund, I think they called Esser maybe? So you know what that is? If we tested two point five million in expenditures, is what we were required to test for the federal program that we selected. You had no findings, so that's wonderful. And okay, the next part really, I just wanted to get some of the financial highlights of your different financial statements that you see in there. It's kind of hard to flip back and forth, but if you do have any questions after we get done here, you can ask me. And I'll turn back to those if we need to. But the first one I wanted to mention was the general fund. The balance decreased two hundred and eighty-six thousand to an overall balance in the general fund of three hundred and sixty-four thousand. You expended forty-nine thousand on vehicles. You reduced your indebtedness of the district four hundred and fifty-four thousand. You expended three hundred and forty-eight thousand in projects at all the schools. And there was two hundred and ninety-seven thousand of those for the elementary roof project. And the other thing that's new this year is they implemented a new standard, what we call standards of auditing standard, and it's regarding leases. Now you normally have the KISSA leases for buses, you all know those. That has normally been on the financial statements. However, your copiers have not been on the financial statements. So they did this new standard, and they want us to record the copiers on your financial statements. However, your copiers, you've had them long enough that they were just very immaterial. So basically, they decided, the manager decided not to report those because those were very immaterial. Still had to do all the, you know, paperwork that was necessary to figure out whether they are material or immaterial, whether we needed to report them. So they still had to do all of that work, and it's also required for future audits. But again, we passed from recording the copiers. But the KISSA leases on there is normal. And basically, the KISSA leases have been on there too because it says at the end, they're the buses or yours, okay? Copiers, normally what most districts do is they, they did it and they use it and they kind of beat it to death. And then at the end of the five years, they turn again and they get all the copiers. But the new standard didn't like that, they felt like that that really needed to be included in the financial statements. And so that's why that new standard came down. Okay? And the last thing is, Ari wanted me to say, he's really encouraging all districts to stay vigilant and prioritizing and keeping emphasis on the finance department. As we see the changes in the labor and economics, the supply and demand, there's a lot of competition for pay and fringe benefits. And so he wanted me to say that too, so I'll do that. Is there anything that you have questions on? I'm not sure if you got to look at this ahead of time, is there anything that you might have? And if you just don't want to say right now, but you want to look at it later, and then you run into a question, you can always call the office. And either I can give you a call back, or we have two, two other auditors, and then Ari of course, who can answer your questions if you feel like you have any.
I've got a little bit more.
Sure.
Is this available electronically now?
I sent, I sent her a PDF of it, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
You can get that from Myra Veth.
Okay.
She's incredible.
It's under, it's under the new business all the way down?
Yeah, but there's an actual items that you have. I missed it. I got you, thank you.
Any other?
Overall, it looks like it was a good audit.
It was a pretty good audit. But Myra Veth is new, so she probably felt pretty overwhelmed. But it, we really did find everything all these years, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, moving along to item D, I'd like the newly elected board members to stand so that our county judge, Mike Williams, can swear you in.
I have a copy of areas you want to read along. I'm going to read the oath to you, remember, we can do this all together if you're comfortable with that.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Congratulations to all of you, and great respect for your service. Some of you have heard me say before, I served as a school board member for twelve years, and that was a tougher job than what I have now. I understand, I appreciate it so much. Ask you to raise your right hand, please. I'm going to read the oath to you and my opinions, and you'll just respond to me that you affirm, that you agree with my opinions. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, as the case may be, that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this commonwealth in faith unto the commonwealth of Kentucky, so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of a member of the Paris Board of Education according to law? And do you further solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons and defend the state nor out of it? Or have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons? Or have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge or aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God? Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you.
It was an honor to be asked to be here.
Appreciate you.
I think you fought duels, but there's still a lot. Ten hundred years, ten, huh?
Moving along to item E, I've heard the minutes from the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting, do you want your motion? Motion by Bruce, second by Janice, all in favor say aye. Motion carries, thank you. You saw on the board packets superintendent's personnel actions, have you reviewed them? And let's see, this would want to be, approve the treasures report, everybody had an opportunity to look those over? Any discussion or questions on any of that? If so, do I hear a motion to approve? Motion by Bruce, second by Ricky, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries, thank you. All right. I'm having a little showcase right now. Item G.
Um, so tonight, I wanted to recognize Michelle Sturgeon. Michelle has recently moved into our librarian position, spotted our elementary school kind of overseeing that, and told me to come visit because it really has become the hot topic among all the kids. It's everybody's, PE is still really in there. But I'm telling you, there's a lot of energy around the library right now. So we have early morning checkout going on, we have kids like having their recess, like they want to go help in the library, or they want to make book boxes to collect books and things of that nature. And so Michelle has done, just within the last few weeks, amazing things in our Paris Elementary Library. I'm looking forward to so many more things. She's, every time she passes my door, she's got a new idea, or I want to talk to you about this. And so the momentum around Michelle taking on that library and just the ideas that she has has really just been amazing. And I'm just so thankful for her, thank you, Michelle, for everything you've done and all the work you've put in, so.
Good home, Louie.
Hi.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Oh, thank you for those kinds of things.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sturgeon.
Thank you.
Item H, presentations, academic highlight reading, Paris Elementary, adopting the new physical.
We're back. All right, let me give you all a hard copy. We're not going to read this all word for word because it's a pretty heavy document. And so I kind of wanted to give you all this to take a look at some highlights and some questions that you all may have about the reading program at our elementary school, and share a little bit about what we're doing to address our, our reading performance and scores. It's not where we want it to be, certainly, I know it's not where you all want it to be. And so we've put a whole lot in place to address that and really move our school forward. And so we've got a lot of momentum going. What you all see on the screen is what you've got there in front of you. There are some colored slides that you'll see up there, these are printed black and white. So, um, we are doing quite a bit. We signed on with the Kentucky Department of Education, letters, cadre. And so that's literacy essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. And our kindergarten, first grade team, also our special education team, Ms. Sturgeon started with us with that, and she's continuing on. And we have one second grade teacher receiving training on literacy essentials. And that's kind of, you've probably heard the buzz about science of reading, and it, man, it's everywhere. And so it really is all about the best of what we can do, how we can best spend our time working with students on teaching reading. And so our teachers have been completing training, Ms. Gregson is also completing training, the teacher training. I'm completing the training as the administrator piece. And so just to let you all know, it's a two-year program for teachers to complete this. And some of our regional co-ops are offering, if you pair this with some other learning, that teachers can get a rank change. So it is a very, very comprehensive program for updating us on reading. Many of our teachers that have graduated within the last five years and come on board to teaching, their instruction was a little bit different when they were in college going through. And so we have to move ahead with best practices, and so that's why we jumped on board. Another thing that I'm doing personally is working very closely with a cadre of administrators who also have teachers participating in these literacy academies. It's called the Kentucky Literacy Academy. And so we have monthly meetings to talk about what's working well, how do we best support our teachers? What are some support that we need from the department? Because KDE is really running these, these cadres. And so that has been very beneficial to myself, and then also some things that we've been able to implement at our school. So Jennifer, if you want to scroll on down a little bit more, and you all can dig into, you know, all of those things. In your packet, you'll see our curriculum that we're using overall, you'll see that on the first page. And that just gives you kind of a, an overview of what we're using. All of the curriculums that you see in place at Paris Elementary are highly rated, have been vetted. We've done research on them to make sure that we have what we, the best thing we can put in front of our students to make sure that our time is well spent and that our students are well-prepared. And we do have several additional supports for our students at Paris Elementary. And we have a partnership with Hearts in Mind, and I think they'll be coming in a couple, a month or two to present a little bit about the grant that we have at Paris Elementary to support our students. And that's working on small group literacy and social emotional learning. We also have a partner with Paris Bourbon County YMCA, and they've provided an instructor to come and work with some of our students that have needs. And so Ms. Durbin is working with us as well. And we do have our extended school services program, we had that in the fall, about forty-five students participated. We're going to start that back up in February, and we have teachers working that in the, in the afternoons. And then we also run our tier-three reading program through AmeriCorps. That's something that we didn't have in place last year, and so we've gotten that in place this year. Ms. Trenery does a wonderful job with that. On the second page of your packet, and maybe easier to see up on the screen, is some of our growth based on our most recent iReady testing in the area of reading. And so you can see that lighter colored bar at the bottom is our fall score information. The bar above it is how we scored at this, at this last time. Anytime that red is shrinking and green is growing, we're making progress. And so as you can see, the hard work of the teachers is really showing us that we're moving in the right direction. It just takes time. It takes a lot of time to get students where they need to be. And so Jennifer, if you want to scroll on up just a little bit. So down at the bottom, you'll see a grade-by-grade breakdown of the percentage of students that have moved up in placement for reading. And so you'll see the grade on the far left column, on the far right, you'll see the percentage of students that have improved their placement. And so based on the strategies that we're implementing in the classroom, you'll see that thirty-five percent of our kindergarteners moved up a level. And so that's great, that's, we want more, but we have movement in the right direction. Fifty percent of our fourth grade students moved up a level. And so those bars on the, on that, that first column, after you see the grade level, is just showing us about how much progress students have made toward a full year's growth. And so you can see twenty-four percent of our students have already met their growth for the full year. And so teachers have done some great work to get students to move a whole year's worth in, you know, August to December. And so Jennifer, if you want to scoot up a little bit more. On page three, you'll see the research base behind the decision that we've made to move in the direction of the science of reading, or what is also known as structured literacy. And so those names are kind of in tandem. And so we began that work last year. We're continuing that work through this letters training that the teachers and myself were participating in. And so one of the big pieces of structured literacy and the science of reading is the idea that you can see up at the top of this graphic, language comprehension includes all of those things. Background knowledge, vocabulary, language structures, verbal reasoning, literacy knowledge. And then it is multiplied by, those skills are multiplied by a student's ability to decode. And so what we see with some of our students is they're able to tap out words, but they may not fully understand what that word means. And so while they can tap it out, that's great, but they may not have the comprehension to. but they may not have the comprehension to understand what it is. So they still aren't there making sense of that word. And so as you can see, elementary teachers have quite a bit of balls in the air that they're juggling with teaching reading because it, really all of those pieces have to be woven together to become a skilled reader. And so as those skills bump up, then we see students being able to be more skilled readers. So this is one of the graphics that's very common amongst the science of reading community. And then if we'll scroll down just a little bit more, you can also see, this is some information for you to kind of take a look more in depth at. Um, you know, tonight when you're trying to go to sleep or, you know, tomorrow. And it really just gives you a succinct overview of the science of reading. Our training is not succinct. It is very robust. And, um, teachers have completed Unit One in the fall. It took the entire fall semester. Unit Two is being completed now. It'll take the full spring semester. And then next year, Unit Three and Unit Four of that training will be completed. And so essentially, what we're doing is gaining those tools and refining some of our practices in our tool belt to make sure that what we're doing with our students, there's a whole lot you can do with kids in reading. We want to make sure that the time that we have with them, which is feels very limited, we are selecting the best tool out of our toolbox and using that with students to ensure that their time is well spent and they are able to become more successful with reading. And so it's a quick overview, a lot of information here. And so I wanted to give you all this so you can kind of digest it. If there are questions, I'm happy to answer those now. If you all have questions later, I'm happy to answer those as well.
This is awesome. Can you, uh, can you give us a report at the end of the school year?
Absolutely.
A progress report from like now to the end of the school year?
Absolutely.
Because reading is such an intricate part of education.
It is, and it, it impacts students' performance in every other area. James Morris was talking with us today, and I thought this was so interesting. He said, when students learn to read music and they become successful reading music, how much that changes their confidence and their attitude in his classroom. And so I think about, that's so powerful to think about, that confidence that they gain from learning that practice, how much more if they learn to read, um, well, and how that would impact every single classroom that they're in. And so, um, that's definitely our goal. We're always looking at what other schools are doing and what should we, you know, how can we best spend our time to best meet the needs of our kids?
That's awesome.
Have you seen a bump in math because of the reading skills going up?
We, so, yes. Um, we also have a math curriculum that we're implementing. Uh, Ms. Morris, Leslie Morris is working very closely, closely with teachers. We are very fortunate to have her be able to be in a position where she can be in the class hand-in-hand with teachers, co-teaching with them. And then she also plans with them weekly. And so her math knowledge is second to none. And so besides all of the things we're doing with reading, we definitely are seeing a lot of benefits in math as well, so.
Yeah, but the fourth grade, I mean, that's, that's a huge job.
It's significant.
I mean, your fourth, third, and second.
But we're not satisfied. We're pushing hard.
That's a huge job from where we learned.
It is. It certainly is.
That will certainly help with test scores.
I, I. I certainly hope so. But any other questions that you all might have?
How many, how many more tests before like the final?
Before the, the KSA? So we will have our spring iReady testing. And so that, that will be, um, that'll add another graphic to this. So that's, um, the iReady testing. And we will also have, um, a benchmark for reading in the spring. So we'll have that as well. And so we've got those two. Um, and then at our school, we plan to do some additional like practice with writing and, and making sure that we're not only testing reading skills, that we're also looking very closely at writing because reading and writing are so hand-in-hand, so. Any else? Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Anybody here tonight for public comment? Don't please say aye. Okay, we'll move along to our consent agenda. Several items to approve here. Uh, approve bills, salaries, and wages. Approve superintendent's expense report. Approve fundraiser requests. Prepare high school media team to host a film festival on February the twenty-fifth. Approve, approve the surplus of bus number two, eleven, and twelve. Approve waiving the rental fee for holding the Titans basketball. Approve surplus of desk, uh, no, of deck and ramp that was attached to the mobile classroom. Any questions about any of those items?
I got one about the Titans.
Okay.
Are they going to be selling concessions or anything like that?
No, it's, it's a just practice space for this group. About half Paris kids, about half Bourbon kids. Uh, they are going to have one scrimmage here. And I checked with our insurance agent, and they're able to do that. But it's not a, they're not collecting a gate or something. It's just they want to get some practice in, just training and practice.
Any other discussion? If not, do I hear a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Bruce. Do I hear a second? Louis, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, there's no old business tonight, so we'll move along to three new business items. So election of school board officers for the twenty-twenty-three calendar year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you very much. We need someone to nominate our co-chairman for the board.
You want to do it again?
Bruce, make the motion. Very second. All in favor of Janice being co-chair, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Moving along to item D. Motion to approve twenty-twenty-three board meeting dates to be held before Tuesday of each month at five o'clock. So do we want to keep our board meetings at that time? That good work for everybody?
Yeah.
So do I hear a motion to approve that? Motion Ricky, second by Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. Motion to approve, uh, item C. Motion to approve the, uh, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two financial audit as presented by Danny Langer tonight. Motion by Louis.
Second.
Second by Bruce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I interject just quickly? I wanted to say shout out to Meyer Beth, uh, new, our new finance director, something on that. And Jackie Morrison and Jenny Hatch and Jennifer Gray, who's helping out. Uh, they, basically they come in and just flip everything upside down and dig in. And, uh, we kind of bend over backwards for them. But they, it was very thorough audit, and our team did a great job. And then a shout out to Martha as well, uh, because this reflected both of the, she was the finance director. So good to have a good, clean report.
It was a good report, too.
It was.
We improved from the last one about the signatures. So that was big.
It needs to be hit once.
There you go.
All right, very good. Uh, moving on to item D. Motion to approve draft budget for the twenty-three-twenty-four school year.
That's, that's in your packet. And for this time, it is still just a roll tour of what we did last year. And we'll make some more tweaks as we get to the May and then the September.
Motion by Bruce, second by Janice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item E. Motion to approve BG five for finalization of the Paris Elementary roof project.
Last step in the process.
The last step about the roof.
All right.
Motion by Bruce.
Second.
Second by Ricky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item F. Motion to approve superintendent to secure auctioneer for bus surplus.
I'll reach out to a couple of your town and see what we can come up with.
Okay, so I hear a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Bruce, second by Ricky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. G. Motion to approve fee proposal for district facility plan.
So this is the, what the local planning committee is working on to revise. The, every four years, we have to revise our facilities plan. Sherman Carter Barhart's helping us with that. And there has, there's a lot of significant stuff that has to be uploaded into the state system. And they also do an audit of basically our entire facilities plan here. So, uh, the fee structure I filed, uh, they just got added over a few minutes ago because we just got that. But it's six thousand five hundred dollars to help through that entire process.
I mean, that was a reduction.
Yeah, the, uh, square footage would allow them to charge, by KDE standards, allow them to charge over ten thousand because they're already a relationship with us. They're knocking that down to sixty-five hundred.
Good. So do I hear a motion to approve the fee proposal for district facility planning?
Motion.
Motion by Bruce, second by Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item H. Motion to approve student accident insurance with Zurich, with Zurich.
So Robert's insurance, he apologized he couldn't be here tonight. But, uh, they, they put that up for bid. We've got the same price that we had last year, which is amazing to have something not below their price this time. So, uh, I'm recommending that we accept, continue, we go accept that bid from Zurich.
Okay. Motion, Janice, second by Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, superintendent's report. He's got a few things to go over here. I'll just let him start at the top and, and go for it.
Yes, so first, a quick update on Kelly Weiss. Uh, two weeks removed from his accident. He really appreciates the prayers and thoughts that he's gone away. There's a GoFundMe that was released yesterday, and there's been significant funds raised there to help him. Uh, I don't think he'd mind me sharing that the individual that hit him doesn't have insurance uh, and, um, I don't think has a license, to be honest. So it's a, there may be, it's not one of those where insurance, it might get a little messy. So, uh, I'm glad people stepped up to help him there. But, um, also have to give a shout out to Brittany Payless, uh, who has stepped in and filled that role tremendously, tremendously. Uh, her, uh, her love for the school runs, runs deep, probably second only Coach Law. Uh, and she's, uh, she's showing it, uh, now and what she's doing just has been so positive and handled. Probably, uh, if you had to think of the hardest job in the district to just drop in your lap, it's, it's probably harder than this, than this seat because it's, there's just so much unknown and so, so, so much specialized. So thank you to Brittany, and thank you to everyone for the, the prayers for Kelly. He really does appreciate it, and is actually home now. Uh, he's, he's spent, uh, over a week UK, a few days at, at Morehead State with rehab. And now he's at home. He's still got significant rehab, got a lot of time before he can put weight on his hips or his feet. Uh, but, you know, he's just kept a good spirits and, uh, we'll be, we'll be excited to get him back when we can. It'll be a while.
Thank you, Brittany.
Yes, thank you so much.
Well, next is.
Anybody wants to donate to the GoFundMe? It is on Facebook's school page.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll probably, I'll email it out to them as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. School board appreciates much, so, uh, thank you, guys. Uh, we've got a little something here for you on, on the table, but with the, the mug. But also, uh, Nick Collier put together a very short video. If y'all could turn around and check that out.
That's, that's where we're going, right?
Yeah, yeah. Vacation. That, that's our new.
What do you need more members to do?
Um, the board.
Give a second.
Members help us make important decisions for our school.
The job might be keeping people safe. It may important to save the school.
So I think important members, I think they need everybody safe here. I think they're in charge of budgeting and just, um, making sure things is orderly and they're okay.
I think they're like the roots of the school that keep us together in, in our house.
The work. Um, board members are people that are among all of our teachers and all of our students. And they keep things in line and create different opportunities for the school that we wouldn't have to think about. Just to be able to. Thank you.
It's a thank you board members.
Thank you board members.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you to our board members.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
That's sweet. That was so sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Uh, this is probably with, with the new construction that's, that's coming on finally, uh, it's probably about as exciting a town as we've had in the district. And so I'm, I'm really excited about, uh, all the program we've got across the district, uh, the staff that we've got, the leadership team that we've got in place. Our, our teachers are phenomenal, and, and they're just a, a fire. So, um, I'm, I'm honored to work with you guys, and, uh, I'm, I'm excited about the future.
That was so proud of them, but just to hear those kids say they, they felt safe.
Yep.
Yeah. In this world, they felt, but here they feel safe. That was awesome. That's unbelievable.
Cheers.
Yes.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, next is funding opportunities. I, I had a call with KDE this week, or today, about the, uh, the recallable nickel option, about what that model costs. And they're, they're, they're quick to not quote, uh, what that, that, any specific numbers. But in talking with the PVA, we're, we're looking at a fifty million dollar increase in, in assessments in our district for this year. Uh, to give comparison, um, two years ago, I think that was eight million. I think the year before that was nineteen million. And, um, to put in perspective, uh, that nineteen million dollar increase here when you all were able to lower the rate from eighty point four to sixty-eight point seven, like almost twelve cents, uh, and that was a nineteen million dollar increase. This is a fifty million dollar increase in assessments. So, uh, definitely should be able to see a significant drop in, in, you know, the rate, the, uh, compensating and the four percent will, will be lower, uh, which provides, provides a, a window of opportunity to potentially, uh, include another recallable nickel that could allow for some of the additional funding for some of the things that we have, we aren't going to be able to do because of the increased cost of preschool. So, uh, just something to put on, on your radar as we get into, to that season. Uh, there, I, I don't believe there will ever be an opportunity again where you can lower the tax rate and include that, that recallable nickel. Uh, there is some concern that the legislature, uh, may not match that as they have in the past, as they did with our past two nickels. Uh, that's not a guarantee. Uh, we'll obviously advocate for that. Uh, as of this time, there's only four other districts going for that. Uh, and I think two more may be possibly debating it along with us. So, you know, the argument would be if forty school districts pass recallable nickels, then the budget has to increase tremendously to match all of those nickels. If it stays at that number, four, five, six, I think there'll be a good argument for them to, to match that. And that's, I mean, that's the basis for passing a recall. If not, you would just set the tax rate and put it in your general fund and do what you, you know, do what we want to with it. Uh, but putting it in that restricted category is the reason, because we still have facilities needs. Uh, so as we start moving forward, we want to talk openly, be honest with it. I think being transparent the last time was, was a very, uh, a good approach to it. Uh, I think with, with that scenario that's played out, uh, that, that could be an opportunity. So you're welcome to discuss that now, or we can, we can move on. But, uh, or I'm happy to answer any questions about what that could look like.
So, I mean, the funding side of it, uh, in the state, are we, we're in close contact with our representative and Senator.
Yeah, it has to be a line item in the budget that we make. If it's House Bill one, and it won't even be this, it'll be next, next by any in, like, twenty-twenty-four. So they will just have to say, hey, these were the number of nickels that were passed, recallable nickels that were passed and not recalled. And this is how much it would cost them to match those for twenty years, essentially double our money. So if, if, if they don't get matched, just passing a nickel would generate us between two and a half and three more million dollars, which would do a big, make a big move towards some of the stuff that we'd hope to do this, this past time with inflation kicking in. Uh, if they matched it, we're talking about five and a half, six million dollars, potentially more of facility, facilities committed funds that, that could happen if, if it were to be matched. So, um, just, I don't, I don't think there will ever be an opportunity where, where the assessments will go up, where you'll still be able to lower the rate and build that in. Uh, but I'm, I'm pretty optimistic. They wouldn't, they wouldn't give me. where you'll still be able to lower the rate and build that in, uh, but I'm I'm pretty optimistic, they wouldn't, they wouldn't give me anything in favor, but I I would be really surprised if the numbers that they give us when they calculate property assessments and tangibles, that when they come back and say, here's your compensating rate, and here's your four percent rate, it will be a significant increase, and then that will be the time to, if you wanna put a significant decrease, that would be the time to see what that window of of putting a nickel on top of that would look like.
And because we've already passed, where are we on the list to for facilities up here?
We're still pretty far on the list, so I I talked with Senator West about that extensively, um, you you have to be in like that bottom ten list, and to be quite honest, to get to that bottom ten in the school, I I'd be embarrassed to be to be to be running that school district, like the the school would have to be in such poor shape, uh, you know, I I'm getting ready to celebrate Paris High School's one hundred year of being around and the that building, which seems to be the call for, you know, possible funding for a new school, but because it's so well-mintained and and structurally sound that uh, we're still, you know, a hundred and eighty on the list of, you know, a thousand buildings, so, um, but just, I just wanna be transparent publicly about that, but also let you guys know, if you have any other question on that, uh, once those numbers get more locked in, we'll know a better idea of what that will be, but it will be a significant decrease to the rate nickel or not.
We won't know if the state will match that just yet.
Yeah, you won't know that till the next legislative, so this session they're in right now, uh, is not a budget session, so it would be the following year for that to match. Now, we could go ahead and bond against what has been passed, so the two and a half million to three million would be accessible now, but the full, the match wouldn't be, we would wouldn't be known until the fall of the time, and granted, like I said, we we would advocate and lobby for for that match. Historically, it's been matched for every time the nickel's been passed, so I think legislature would be in a tough spot to not match it, but
Yeah.
they they get to do what they wanna do, uh, you know, that would be.
But that match could potentially be there for next year.
Yes, we would know at the at the end of the next session, uh, if whether or not that would be matched or not, if that's passed.
And usually, when do they do that?
Uh, so that runs from Janu- it would be January of twenty-four till, I don't know when the session ends, March, April, something like that. It's a sixty day session.
Okay.
This one's ending in March, so it might be, it's into April.
So we know, uh, spring next year.
We know by April, April, May of twenty-four, if it's if it's gonna, if it's in the budget or not.
Yeah.
And I say, I'm still optimistic that it would be matched if it were passed, but it's just not guaranteed.
Yeah. Sorry?
Go ahead.
Uh, this next is facilities, uh, just a quick update on the preschool, by the thirty-first, we should have the revised uh, updated bids on the preschool. Once we know that, then uh, there there's potential for a special call meeting in early February to to take action if we need to move quickly on that. Uh, once we know those numbers, then it will be what is left over out of our bonding capacity. The other thing, rates went down, uh, there was a bond sold yesterday at three point three percent compared to four point two five, four point two seven, like a month ago, so uh, if we, if that goes down, if we can get anything close to that, that increases our bonding capacity with the with the double nickels that were passed, so that could open some doors uh, for some additional projects, but there will be some decisions made to be made, uh, once that preschool number comes in, assuming it's at a spot that's able to move forward, then you guys will have to decide what little bit windows, how much is left there, and what things you want to to spend that on at that time, so uh, once I have that, I'll I'll get as as detailed a list together as I can for you and and make a recommendation, but ultimately, that's your all's uh, decision to make. Uh, last couple, I thought this was gonna be a long meeting, um, Western High Night is next Monday night, uh, I hope you guys can find it out, we're gonna, we're gonna have Coach Bar presented last uh, week, uh, we're inviting all those uh, alumni to come, and I think we'll have a good turnout. We've got a a couple of cool surprises for them that we're gonna uh, share that I think Coach Bar mentioned that they they're not aware of, uh, so really excited to see uh, to have that event, and and we'll have a chili supper at six, and the game, uh, ceremony's beforehand, and the game starts at seven thirty. And our teams will be wearing Western jerseys, and cheerleaders will be wearing Westerns, so uh, gonna be a really cool throwback. I I told it, I think I told Angie, it's, they had a really cool, at the Martin Luther King uh, march, I was sitting next to Miss Patty and uh, Buckner Lucy Jackson and talking about a little bit, and uh, they they invited me to the Western High reunion uh, this summer, so I was really honored to be able to come by and and say everything, so I think the the Western High community's definitely loves, feels like we've adopted them and definitely part of our community and and history here, so uh, gives me goosebumps thinking about it, how how much of a connection they have, we still got, we've got so many grandkids and great-grandkids that are still connected strongly to the to the school. Uh, then on February fourth, we're doing a regional nineteen seventy regional championship boys' basketball team and cheerleading state championship night, so that that nineteen seventy squad, we recognize, uh, Nick has put together a uh, special video tribute uh, to that to that group. Uh, we're trying to, if you know of any videos or pictures uh, from them that you could wanna share, send them my way, uh, we're really excited about that. Uh, and then the, I think three nights later, uh, we have the two thousand seventeen all A state championship boys' basketball team will be recognized, and we'll be doing a a video for that, our goal is to, so we've got a screen that we can pop up in the halftime and play a video uh, in the middle of court at halftime of the game, so uh, a bunch of exciting recognition, I'm really excited about that recognition committee that's come together to help recognize these different groups, and we're gonna continue to do that as we move forward, we're catching up a lot this year because of COVID, and we haven't been able to have many of these, but uh, it's, the history here is phenomenal, and I think uh, our alumni appreciate when we recognize, and and I think our kids uh, benefit from it. You'll see at the Western High Night, we've got kids in every school having an active role in in that evening, so.
So what date took place, Mr. Collier?
Uh, the Western High Night's next Monday.
Okay.
The seventy championship is on February fourth, and the seven, twenty seventeen all A is on the seventh. And actually, Terrence is coaching at Harrison County, and we're playing Harrison that night, so he'll be back for that, uh, kind of coordinated that, so uh, Coach Bar's done a phenomenal job leading through all of that. And then something I didn't put on here, we're having a Realtor brunch on February.
Ninth.
Ninth, uh, so we're inviting every Realtor that has a listing in Paris and Bourbon County uh, to come to cafeteria, uh, Hopewell Bank Exchange and Cafe Marco are doing a brunch for them, uh, where you've got two students that are gonna be doing a presentation, a five-minute presentation for them, and then uh, the Chamber Magazine you all saw, uh, Nick's putting together a little front and back pamphlet that will go, and that way, they'll leave here with thirty or forty of those that when they sell a house, they drop this in there, so that people know, uh, just a a quick in information, so we've got some awesome door prizes that I think will draw a crowd, we've got uh, Stockyards Bank is sponsoring, Ashley McFarland, Kentucky Farm Bureaus, or Urban Pay Farm Bureaus sponsoring, uh, so got some great gifts that are really nice, that I think will will get some some Realtors here, and it'll be in and out, uh, but I'm, we've got two students doing a presentation for that, so uh, if you're free and wanna come by that morning, it'll be a nice meeting.
Starts what time?
Nine to ten on the on the ninth, so that's all I have, any questions about that?
Excited.
It is.
Okay. Four comments, Louis?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple, um, thank you for um, the update for Paris Elementary School, I really appreciate that. Um, it's, we're moving in the right direction, I think, and I just wanna give a shout out to Mr. D. Luke wouldn't be in a position that he was in now, if it wasn't for Mr. D, so thank you. Uh, is there any way that we can look at helping the uh, track funding for uniforms? That's something that I know that, I know they got some for middle school, but I think their high schools kinda uh, depleted on their funding.
Yep, um, last year during COVID, we granted, the board granted a hundred dollars per student to help offset some of those funding costs. Uh, high school boys' track was only given five hundred last year, so I'm checking with Coach Murphy, he says he's already got ten or twelve going now. Um, and then I think when basketball is wrapped up, that that number might even go up, so uh, I I wouldn't be opposed to recommend that the board approve bumping that number up based off the the enrollment they have, I've also reached out to Coach Murphy as well about some different fundraising opportunities, so um, I think getting, we want us, we want all our teams to be able to go out, and uh, we've had track here for a long time, and a strong success in track, but it kinda died down there for a little while, so uh, he's definitely got it headed in the right direction with numbers.
My understanding of the whole track team, like, got thirty-eight kids already.
Yeah.
And possibly getting maybe five to seven more.
Yeah.
Once, once basketball's finished, so it's huge for kind of class A district.
It's it's exciting, so I I'll do a little bit more digging in with that, uh, and see where the exact numbers will be, but um, because that number was so low last year, only five kids counted last year, and if that number truly is a significant number, I think it would be uh, fair to do that, to recommend you guys a little bit additional support, and then like I said, we're working with the high school admin team and the athletic director to make sure Coach Murphy has a connection to do some fundraising as well.
Okay, and uh, thank you for the um, board appreciation video, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ricky?
I don't have nothing to add.
I mean, like, I'm on the phone. First of all, thank you everybody in the school district for uh, working hard and 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 making kind of the turnaround for all the different schools and stuff like that, and then uh, just, I mean, it's just exciting to see all the different things that are going on. Uh, I guess we're being, we have a bunch of students that will be featured on WKYT in the next few months, which is pretty cool, so that's exciting.
Thank you, Bruce, Janice?
I am so grateful to be at this district, I really am, and I am truly thankful to the staff that just steps in wherever the need be. I'm thankful Brittany, and Nick, Michelle, man, I mean, you know, you all do, you all truly, I think, bleed orange, orange and black. You step in, and I'm so, I'm so humbled that you all just do that, I mean, you know, not for self-gratification, but you do it for our students, right? So, and and I'm I'm grateful that I'm back on board for another year or so.
Thank you. Thank you, Janice. Okay. I want to share a couple things, uh, first thing I want to share, the new Chamber Magazine came out, and Nick put together this beautiful two-page um, ad in here about our school, and if you ever had a chance, Chamber Commerce has several copies, and I think they're gonna give the school several copies. Nick, fabulous job.
Thank you.
Fabulous, um, when you open it, it's like, wow, it's really, really nice, so if you get a chance, get it and read it, it's super, super nice, and of course, it's got secretaries on the front. Um, the other thing I'd like to, um, thank everybody who came tonight and and for all the hard work, your presentation about reading was wonderful, thank you so much, and Michelle, thank you for all your hard work, it does not go unrecognized, and Brittany, she's my girl, appreciate everything you do, you gotta be hard, and thank you for stepping in, and the video you put together for Kelly was made me cry, it was very sweet, and I think his family really appreciated that. Um, I would like to say that um, we just had our Class A district basketball tournament here for the girls and boys, and I got to go to several games, and uh, our boys played good, and of course, we didn't end up where we would have liked to have been, but these these kids played some good games all week, the girls and the boys, and uh, I was just so proud of them, and the game against Bishop Ross, um, the gym was packed, and uh, the kids cheering section was fabulous, and uh, it was really good to see the gym filled, and I'm very proud of Coach Fransom and the good job he's doing as our first-year coach. He's got a good heart, he loves his school, and I just want him to know and our team to know that we are very proud of them, and the same way with our girls. Um, they represented our school well, and Coach Bar did a great job in helping to put this on here in our district. Um, just keep up the good work and keep moving forward, and Judge, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Okay, and that's all I have. Anybody else? Well, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Janice, second.
Janice?
Louis? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.